All right, good evening. I'll now call the meeting to order. I think I'm gonna start saying the date so that we, when we listen to the videos later. So this is November 4th and this is our Committee of the Whole for November. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest to declare? Okay, it would now take a motion to adopt the agenda in its current form. Do I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Estey, seconded by Counselor Murray. Are we ready for the question? We'll now proceed with the vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda in its current form, show your consent by saying yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. So next we have the adoption of minutes. There's two sets of minutes here. The first is the October 7th Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Do I have a mover to adopt those? Moved by Counselor Savoy. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Murray. Are we ready for the question? All those in favor of adopting the October 7th Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes? Wow, I'm having a hard time. Show your consent by saying yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next are the minutes for the October 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Do I have a mover to adopt those? Moved by Deputy Mayor Jean Gra. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Estey. Are we ready for the question? We'll now proceed with the vote. All those in favor of adopting the October 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes? Show your consent by saying yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. So we'll move to new business. For those watching the live stream and here in the room, we do have Counselor Martin on team. So if you're hearing the little delayed yes, that's, that's our team's vote from Counselor Martin. Okay, so new business, first item is grant requests. CAO Downey?
Okay, so we had a final grant request come in as per our buy, or our policy. October 31st is the deadline. So we've had one request come in from Club Dashdall for a projector and screen for an amount of $500. I wanted counsel to consider this because we did already give them $500 at the beginning of the year. However, we have 750 left in our budget. So I guess you guys can try to decide the best course of action.
Do we have any, Counselor Savoy?
The, the, just clarification. When it was decided that we would limit to one application a year for maximum 500, is that a bylaw or just a policy? If we do so choose to give a second time, are we creating a precedent? Are we?
Medianta?
So, well, our policy, we are able, it is a policy, we have a grant policy. We are able to decide to override that, i.e. decide to give a higher grant or give a second grant. Counsel would have to decide that they wish to do that. But it is, because it's a policy, it is something that we are allowed to make a consideration to do.
Deputy Mayor Jean Gra?
I just, I have a question for the CAO. Did we move to once a year or was it, was it twice a year they could do it?
It's twice a year.
Yeah, okay.
Once every six months, I think it was.
Yeah.
Yep.
So technically they can reapply. Since they applied in the first wave, they can apply now. Or is this?
No, it was, it was per, it was per year.
But we hand over twice a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they applied, we had given them funds, I think in February or March.
Okay.
With the first round of, of grants.
I just didn't know if they could reapply in the second cohort or they just had to, okay.
I mean, they, they can, there's nothing to stop them. It's just, we've, we have money left in the grant budget. So it's, it sort of would be setting a precedent, but...
It's, it's kinda like Mark was asking, we can go against the policy.
We can, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Counselor Murray?
The first time, was that for the full 500 or was it for 250? Or a different amount, sorry?
I can just, let me just double check on that to make sure.
Was it? Sorry.
Oh, I closed it.
Oh, I thought that just gave totals maybe not.
The first one was complicated because they had asked for something.
They got 500. Tent for outdoor vents.
Okay, right, so I think their original application was for maybe the air conditioners or some, or the...
Bathrooms, wasn't it?
I thought it was mini splits.
Okay, mini splits, that's what I mean.
Yeah, and then counsel said, well, no, you know, it's, it's not for these capital items.
Yeah.
So they purchased a tent.
And for the projector grant application, they didn't submit any receipts or like quotes or anything like that for, for this?
Just a screenshot from, I believe it was, it looked like it was Amazon. It was a screenshot of, of, of the actual brand they wanted to order.
Okay.
Yeah, and it was $496.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Estey?
I think just where the policy is somewhat new and given the fact that the property taxes are frozen, they could reapply not even in a couple of months because they'd be into the new year. And I'd rather see them, I'd rather see us not change our policies that quickly or that easily when they've already been contemplated by counsel. So I guess I'd rather see them apply more in like January or once we roll into the next year, which is not that far away.
Sure, okay. I'm sorry, I can't, does Counselor Martin have his hand up? Or like, just, yeah, okay.
Yep. Am I good?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, go ahead, sorry.
My consensus is with Counselor Estey. Where these policies are so new, I would rather stick to what we have for now and have them reapply in January.
Okay, I, I would agree with that. I also think it might be an opportunity for them to have a look and see what else is out there. I think they could probably get more than just a projector and a screen for that price if they did a little bit more digging. Cause that seems like a high price tag for that. I, I looked at them and I think they could probably do a little, maybe have something else or, you know, not need the full 500. So, so I think we're in agreement that we're not looking to go outside the policy and that if they, but we're all happy to entertain them again in January.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So the next is under correspondence and it is the Department of Transportation. So yes, the first attachment was a letter I received and some information is coming about a change to the way we can advocate for repairs to try and help set priorities with the province. So did, did you have a little more you wanted to add to that, Hannah?
Well, honestly, not really, but it, it just, it looks like they're going to take priorities from counsel as to where you guys wanna see work done on highways. So I really, I wanted to bring this forward so that in the new year, it's not something I think we need to tackle right now, but in the new year, I think we, maybe in one of the first Committee of the Holes will sit down and if counsel want to, I guess collectively come up with some areas and we send a letter off to DTI and they're, they're making the offer, so we might as well take advantage of it.
So I see here that on the 18th of, and the 25th of November, there are virtual information sessions about how this process is gonna work. Do you know, is that open to everybody? Like, can we?
I can look into that for you.
Or do we get like one invite in if we wanted to?
No, no, I, I think anybody's gonna be able to participate.
So I think it would be a good idea, just, just if nothing else for the fact that come next year, you know, maybe it's not all of us here, if as many of us as could understood it, it, it might be, make it easier next year for us to get these priorities in with them. So I see November 18th is English and November 25th is French. So obviously there's a couple of us that could go to either and some of us that can only go to one. So, yeah, if you can get us the information about that so that we can maybe attend those virtual sessions. I mean, obviously if we can do it from home, it might be a different opportunity for some of us, so. Oh, you mean if we did like a group one here? I'm fine with that if, yeah, if you wanna just do, wanna do it in here, I'm fine with that too. I'm fortunate to be close, so it doesn't matter to me. Okay, so more to come on that. So 5C is appointment of bylaw enforcement officers. So I think Hannah's got some background to give us on that to explain what we're up to there.
I do, so mostly the, the part to accept the proposal for Maritime Enforcement Services was more the budget side. So counsel approved the budget for Maritime Enforcement. But now counsel has to appoint the actual individual officers. And this is common, we've done it, you know, for years before working with them and, or myself working with them in other municipalities. So as any of their enforcement or staffing change, we go back and we appoint that specific officer that's gonna be. So we've been, Jordan Seer will be working on ours, but our main guy will be Samuel LeBlanc, I believe his name is.
Yep.
So to keep that consistency, Samuel will be the, you know, our, our go-to contact. But Jordan will also have eyes on, on files as well. So the motion is here and we will, I'll have counsel pass that motion naming those, those guys specifically. So there, there's been, obviously we're using them for dangerous or unsightly premises. That's the, the focus of why we have them. They are officially on contract with us as of November 1st. I've sent them one address that I know had been, the province had been looking at this property and I've received complaints about it. So I've sent them that, they've started the file, but they won't take any action until those names are, those officers are named. And moving forward to, we will, and I, I, maybe I put it in, in the, in the email, we'll find a process that works best, but it's usually input from counsel or staff if we're having, you know, we'll, we will keep a spreadsheet here as to what addresses we're getting complaints on. And, and the focus is, I mean, it's, it's unsafe, it's dangerous or, you know, extremely unsightly premises. And I just heard you, Counselor Martin, do you, was there a question or?
Nope, just shuffling around.
Okay. So essentially, we will, they had stated they wanna have three active files, all, files all the time. So there's one property now. But I think in the very near future, we should come up with two other properties. They also said that they were gonna be doing like drive-throughs and they will also come back with suggestions of what they think fits the, fits the criteria for dangerous or unsightly.
So just quickly, did the province have any open files when they stopped the service that they're handing over?
No.
Okay, okay. Deputy Mayor Jean Gra?
I was just wondering, you know, there's turnover in companies. And so every time, say, Jordan or Samuel, they leave their position, do we have to go through this again?
We do have to reappoint whoever the officer. Now, Jordan's not because Jordan's the owner of the company. But, but, but if, if Samuel were to be, you know, displaced somewhere else and we had somebody else, we would have to rename that person as the appointed bylaw officer.
Perhaps we should look into a way to like not do that, maybe just appoint Jordan and then let him worry about who his bylaw officer is?
To be honest, I've never asked the question why, why that has to be done. But it, it is, over the years, that is the way that it's always been done. I assume it has something to do with liability.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I would say like the municipality's asking him to go to people's homes on our behalf, so probably don't want just any guy in a maritime enforcement uniform.
Yeah.
Counselor Estey?
When we allocated the budget for this, excuse me, which level did we choose? Was it the first level or the second level? Oh, so it was first level, okay. Cause I know it's new, so they only have the one file potentially. And you mentioned that they'd be going out possibly looking for other files. So if that's the case, there's no other lower package that we could get. If we found out over time that the average is one case a month and we're paying for three, I guess that's where my head's at. But I, it, it's obviously four days in, so it's, not a lot has happened yet. But just, once we get this data, I just wanted to know if there's something we could do with it if we were averaging less. But it sounds like we can't, so.
Yeah.
I think the only other thing would be, look at, is there anything else we have that we feel we need enforcement for? Okay, so I just, obviously it sounds like Maritime Enforcement is at a point where like counsel needs to nominate these folks. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns leading into the next meeting? Okay, so if we...
Counselor Savoy?
So they won't be in service until the 12th?
They're working on the file, they can't go to the properties.
Okay, but can we vote on it on the 12th? Does the 12th can be?
Yes, yep, yep. So if anybody thinks of anything that they need, feel they need to know before the next meeting, please reach, sorry, Counselor Martin, did you have anything?
Oh, I'm good, everything's cop still.
Okay, so if anybody thinks of anything, if they could reach out to Hannah ahead of the meeting to try and get it sorted before the meeting, just, we don't wanna not, we don't wanna hinder any progress they can make by not appointing them. Okay, now the fun one. So a budget update for 2026.
Okay, so I have a couple of things under budget. The first thing I'll start with is the, the capital renewal plan. So this is, this is the, the, the new fund that we are receiving in 2026. So this is, I think our allotment is 93,000 or 94,000 for 2026. So the more that, the more information that rolls out about this program, it's getting a little more complicated. I knew that it was gonna work something like the, the Canada Community Building Fund where you have to have like an approved capital expense or an approved capital investment plan. And they are serious about it. So they have sent us, I might, I'm, I'm gonna try to share my screen with you, Counselor Martin, at the same time as sharing it on...
Yep, I can see it.
This fun thing, you can see my screen, okay. Can you still see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so they have provided us a template to complete. This template has to be completed and submitted to the province by December 15th, which doesn't give us a lot of time. So again, the, the funds have to be for reinvesting in any outdated infrastructure. So there was a couple of good ideas that counsel had come to me and said, does this qualify? And it's, it's not, they're not eligible expenses. The only thing that I am suggesting at this time is signage to replace the, the existing Irish Town Community sign at the beginning of the, the entrance. And so that has to go to the same way that we did the five-year capital investment plan. You guys adopted that as a motion. It's the same, they're asking the same thing here. We have to put in 10 projects, that's out of the realm of realistic for us, for Maple Hills. Because we're only getting $93,000 unless there was going to be a, an investment that the municipality was gonna do separate. We're, you know, we're limited to how much money we can spend there. So the, I've reached out to some places to get some quotes for signage. I still don't have anything. The only thing I'm going on by cost-wise is what the former CAO had reached out, or he had, he had gotten quotes when it came to signage for this building. So he had reached out to Hanson Signs and Signway for interior and exterior signage. The exterior signage, the road sign, was cut from the project scope because it was, it was too much. So that was one of the things that had to go. So I'm, I'm literally going on, on, what I remember that quote for that sign was, was somewhere around 120,000.
It's a pixel board.
Yeah, it's a...
Sorry, there were shocked faces around the table, that's why.
Yeah. So I did my best to, you know, come up with a, a project description that it would replace the existing exterior sign. So I know it's a lot to ask counsel to decide on this in, you know, such a short window. And there are two information sessions coming up on this, this funding stream. So it's even funny that they're having these sessions and I'm asking counsel to make decisions before we even know the full process. Now I do know that there are two things. The first thing is to send a capital renewal plan. The second part, in order to get your, your funding, is having a capital, or sorry, an asset management plan. So the, we know that N-Globe is doing, working on a, a asset management plan for us. So essentially, they're asking, I guess they're asking municipalities to be a little more responsible for their capital assets. So phase one of the asset management plan is to have a governance statement. And then phase two, which we're moving into this, this next year, is an asset management policy. So that's the governance side, so an inventory of assets, condition assessment. This is all part of the asset management plan that, that N-Globe is working on. The level of service, climate change. So if it were something, you know, if we're talking about underground infrastructure, that's, you're gonna have more of climate change risks there. Risk assessment, cost analysis, financial planning and priority setting. So this is gonna be an ongoing project that obviously this, the office here is gonna have to work at. So that's where I'm, that's where I am right now. I'm not sure if, if I've explained it clearly enough or if there's questions.
Counselor Estey?
So with this fund, it's conditional upon us spending something in accordance with this document that we'd have to submit by the 15th of December.
Yes.
So you're recommending that we do signage for, say, 125? We get 95 back, so it would cost 30,000 if the project were to cost 125?
Uh, not, not exactly.
Because we would recover 95 of it?
Not exactly, so we do have some monies in our capital fund now, like in our, in our reserve, capital reserve fund, that counsel could take out. It would be ideal if we could just keep growing, like keep adding to that each year. So then if we have an actual like major need for capital funds, we have them. But I'm not suggesting going over 90,000. So I'm putting in the 90,000, which honestly is gonna be a little bit, a little bit, it's gonna be a little bit more because this is plus HST. Like this isn't including HST, so the contribution from this fund would be 90,000. I'm not suggesting counsel spend any more than, than that, other than our HST portion that we don't get back.
So the sign would be, so then you're saying 90 plus takes some out of the capital fund? Or am I not understanding you correctly?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that we stay under budget with this project, like that, that...
So we'd be entitled to 95 max, but you're saying do 90?
Yes.
All in?
Yes.
But didn't you just say the sign was 125?
No, that, I only had, I only was going on an old, an old quote.
So basically you would see what we could get for 90 because that's what we would agree to, which is under this cap of 95. Okay, I understand, thanks.
Anybody else?
So I, I, I think it's worth looking into. I don't think we have a very good presentation at the road. I don't think it would hurt for us to look into it. It's, again, it's another situation where we're very limited in what we can do with this money because we can only reinvest it in existing capital and it has to be for replacement or repair. Like one of my questions had been, could we use it for signs with the new brand? And the answer is no. It, yeah, if, if we chose, I suppose, probably, but I think that's all done, isn't it, the rule?
So the, it has to be January 1st and after?
Oh, oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, we're limited, it's kinda like when we did the gas tax on the parking lot. Like we're limited because we only own one piece of property. So we can leave the money and not do it, or we can do it with the money that's being offered. So I, I think it's worth looking into.
What about the bridge?
The, the bridge would qualify, yes.
Oh. That might be, yeah. Deputy Mayor Jean Gra?
I would strongly suggest we look at the bridge cause every time I drive, that's the first thing I see is the tape across the bridge. So I don't know what the latest numbers we had on that. But yeah, that, that's something that I would rather the money went to. But you know, I'm just one, one person on council here.
So did we ever hear back after we asked about the quotes that we received and the large variation in the quote that we received?
No, we've not heard back, but I've also not been pushing them very much on it.
I suppose because we didn't have a plan to do it. Okay, might be worth checking into that then, cause yeah, I would agree. I didn't think the bridge, but yeah, I guess since we'd be replacing the bridge, it would qualify. In my head, it was a new bridge, so yeah, I didn't think it would qualify, but, okay. Yeah, that's, that's actually a good point. It'd be worth having all the numbers to, I realize it's a short window for you, but...
Yeah.
If you can get that information, it gives us a little bit more to think about. Yeah, Counselor Martin?
You can go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Oh, thank you. Now, we have the list, was it 10 items there you mentioned?
They give, yeah, they give space for 10 items and, and they've specifically requested, you put to be determined if you don't have 10 projects.
Okay. And is it up to their discretion on how much, how much of those funds go to each project? Or is it, they just start at your number one and move down from there?
No, so we could, to make this a simpler process, we could do, say, 90,000 for the sign and then put in, because this isn't just for 2026, this is like looking ahead as well. So we could put in both projects. We could put in the sign and the bridge.
Okay. Could we add what's counsel's thought as far as that dilapidated ball shack?
Counselor Savoy says that that wouldn't be a bad idea to put on there. Anybody else have a, a comment on? So that's this, yeah, okay. Oh, we had Counselor Murray first. Go ahead, Counselor Murray.
Uh, you know, when it comes to the, the bridge, if we can kinda maybe go off of some of the early quotes we got, I know they were significantly less than the last round of quotes we got by, yeah, hundreds of percentages. So, yeah, so I would look at like one of those maybe lower quotes. But I have no problem with the ball shack either, if that's a, an option, whether it's, you know, anything to do with that. As I think last year they used it quite a bit, or they started, you know, probably use more of that with the, some of the used boards taken off here in the area, so I'm good with that.
Counselor Estey? No? Okay. Okay, and I mean, I guess we put these on the list, but we can remove them, am I not?
That's part of, when we have the, yeah, when we have the information sessions, we should, we should be able to know. Like I know Canada Community Building Fund, you put in your capital investment plan, you change it, you just let them know, you have a motion by counsel, and then you let them know. They let the federal people know that the plans changed, so it's pretty flexible. Like if, if you'll remember, we put in 1.8 for the parking lot upgrades. We ended up only spending, you know, one or, or thereabouts. So we will update that. So we will update that again, when that project is done, we'll update that again. Because we have to let them know, we didn't spend all that money. So this is gonna be the next, this is where the other eight is going. So I assume it'll be something like that, but like I said, we haven't had the information sessions yet, so.
Counsel Resti.
So is this a one and done? Or is it possible that we get this money in the future as well?
It's, it's an annual allotment.
So it's an annual allotment. Cause just from, if I. I'd be in favor of the sign. I've said at other meetings, I'm not a big fan of the bridge project, just where. If we picture having the emergency at that school, and you have to have kids walking in groups of two across the bridge, creating a bottleneck on a road. And then we have to plow or like shovel a path from the bridge all the way here, where they could walk just up the street and down. Not in two by two, creating this big, I think it'd be safer to actually use the road. And so I've, haven't been a proponent of the bridge, but I would see, if I had to rank it, I think we are gonna need some signage. Especially with the branding that we're doing.
Doesn't count.
Oh.
Can't do the signage for the branding.
So you just need the one here?
Yeah, we can replace the sign here on our property that needs replacing.
I understand.
We can't make new ones or get new ones to put in other places.
Right, so that sign, was that signage, I meant that sign. So that sign and the shack as well. Based on what I'm hearing, it was well-used. So I would, I'd be more supportive of those two in that order.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, just to clarify, so twenty twenty-six, we have, we are receiving ninety-three, uh, ninety-three thousand eight hundred thirty-three. Uh, twenty twenty-seven estimate is one hundred and ten. Twenty twenty-eight estimates a hundred and twenty, twenty twenty-nine estimates a hundred and thirty. So it's, it's a. It's a first year, so I'm reluctant to say this is, you know, we're absolutely gonna get this every year. You know, it, it could change with the government, right? Unlike the Canada Community Building, that's been a, a longstanding, you know, guaranteed funding. Um, but it is something that we're gonna have every year, um, for the foreseeable future is what we're told. So, and, uh, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're, we have an appetite to put a few more things on the list, with the understanding that we can take them off the list. And I, I think beyond that, it's probably best for us to wait till Hannah has her information session before we make any further. When did you say that was?
So December fifteenth, it has to be in. So that might mean. Counsel having a special meeting. Sorry. Right now, we have a special meeting November twelfth. We will have a regular meeting November eighteenth. We don't have anything scheduled for, uh, for December, because we, we wouldn't have a meeting in December. But if I can't get this done by November eighteenth, um, then we'll have to have a special meeting after that to adopt it. And just remember, a special meeting can also be a virtual meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've got one more question for you.
Okay. Yep.
Go ahead, Counsel Martin.
Um, with the funds, like you mentioned, these, the old quote that came from our previous C O was in the one twenties. Can we, if this is prolonged bit of funding, can we use two years for the fundings for one project? Like, if the sign is one twenty, we get ninety-seven this year, whatever, next year to finish it off?
I don't, I don't believe that's how it's working, whereas that's how CCBF works. It doesn't seem like that's the way. I, I know that you can, you can carry it over. So you cannot spend it and then spend it all in year two. However, the reason that I am recommending the signage is because nobody knows where we are, nobody knows how to find us. No one knows how to find, you know, some of our tenants that are here in the building. And.
And it adds another layer of communication.
And it adds another layer of communication, because the sign that I am looking at is, we would be able to display. Events, meeting dates. And, you know, uh, in my dream world, we would be able to have, um, like veterans' pictures. So like, kind of what other communities do, where they have the veterans' banners. We could do like a, we could do a program like a, um, just around the first of November until the November eleventh. We could also maybe do grad photos, just to build that, uh, sense of community.
So, um. I agree with all of that. And actually, one of the signs that we were looking at, let, um, C O Downey had to show me a picture of this evening. Actually had five panels underneath that you could potentially rent to a tenant. Or, you know, somebody that wanted to advertise, or to kinda, you know, maybe feed the grant fund or something like that, right? So there are opportunities there to additional communication, but also maybe a little bit of offsetting for cost.
Is there any appetite to see that right now, or?
Do you wanna see an image of the one that she was showing me?
Okay, so obviously, I just, I found this one on, I kinda put in Google what I was looking for. So it would just be like, something at the top would be, uh, uh, communauté. Rural Maple Hills Rural Community. This sign would be the one that changes. And then these would just be a backlit, um, like a backlit panel. So, um, let's say the M L A wanted a sign, her sign would go here. And then if somebody was leaving, it would just slide out and, and somebody else could, could replace the sign. So that, that kind of idea with information rotating. So that's all.
So anybody have any other questions on that topic? Okay, so, sorry Hannah, when did you say the information session was?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't say when it was, but it is, uh, there soon. Sorry, I don't have the dates right here.
Counsel Resti.
If we had a sign like that, like one that's a digital sign where we could put up messaging and, and photos. Would we want a policy for what type of stuff can go up there?
We have a sign policy.
I think you mean specific to our digital display.
Digital, like what can go up there? Like if we're gonna be, like what type of, what type of communication can Maple Hills employees put on the sign?
That's not already addressed on the, in the sign policy?
Digital signage?
Well, I, I think probably the best thing to do would be to reread the sign policy.
Yeah, sure.
And see what, yeah, what we've already agreed to. And if there's concerns, then we could modify the policy.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I don't, I don't have the dates right in front of me, but.
Cause yeah, C O Downey's right, there was stuff in there about certain, you know, you can't campaign for politicians. And you can't, you know, specific religious, there was reference to that type of thing, so. So yeah, I think probably review it and.
Sure.
Kinda go from there. Okay. I think you had more on budget though, right?
I do. Sorry if this is very confusing, Counselor Martin, because I'm switching windows here. Okay, so I have a, we'll talk about twenty twenty-six budget, um, in just a moment. But I have a, some information to update you guys about the, um, the parking lot budget. So, uh, the first option that we were presented with was a one point five million dollar. Net HST option for the parking lot upgrade. We went with a revised upgrade of one point zero net HST. So the final approved scope, um, included limited landscaping and light pole bases only. So now we have a almost completed parking lot with, um, light pole bases, so there's three of them out there. Essentially because it's, before you do the paving, those are electrical wires that are, that are run to there. A lot easier and, and cost efficient to do that first. And we chose a, um. A, I guess, simple or generic, uh, oh my goodness, bolt pattern. So I had asked N-Globe what we're looking at for, uh, parking lot lighting. And they have, they went to their, their go-to person, I guess. So right now, we have temporary lighting provided by the contractor. So when we have whatever going on out here, they have a, a pole out there with, I don't know, looks like stadium lighting. For safety of the parking lot, and that's a rental of a thousand dollars a week. So they are suggesting that we, if we want to proceed, this is outside of the scope of the project. So this is an, this is additional money outside of the one million. Thirty-five thousand dollars for, to finish putting up the light poles that have two lights on them, and that's for three of them. So you can kind of see in the parking lot where the light pole bases are. So I said I would bring this back to council, um, obviously, because it's an, it's not a budgeted item. To see how council feels about it. The other thing that I would, um, like to say that. To, to proceed, the next step is to confirm the order, um, which we've checked with the suppliers. And they have this one in stock, um, but lead times for delivery are ten to twelve weeks. So we're. If we're looking at the current contractor who's willing to do the installation, if we're gonna buy them. Then it, it would be, it would be under their current contract. So there would be no additional cost for that. It's just the actual poles and lights themselves.
Counsel Resti.
So when we were going through the parking lot, I remember, what, I forget which meeting, but I, I said, remember. I asked the question about the contingency, and is this definitely enough contingency? And I was reassured, I think, by multiple parties it was. So do you know where the parking lot, like, do we have any progress billing to see where we are? In relation to the total cost? And do you feel like all the contingency is gonna be used based on, uh, what we have budgeted? And what they had budgeted for contingency?
Yeah, so he, he, they gave an update on the contingency. What they have right now is at twenty, it was twenty-some thousand. But they would prefer to hold on to that contingency for landscaping. So there's addition, sorry, there's additional ditching, um, there was. We decided afterwards that a, the ditch that was, uh, dividing the two parking lots. So the paved area and then the asphalt, because there was a ditch there, there was gonna have to be some kind of like, uh. Yes, uh. Guard rail, guard rail. So instead of doing that, they implemented a thirty-five hundred dollar, um, like a French drain process instead. So when you're on that part of the parking lot, you can drive over onto the paved, um, for better traffic flow. So it was, it was presented to me as, do you want to, do you wanna dip into contingency with this? We can and say, well, if, if the, anything additional for landscaping can't get finished, we'll use this. But because they were not part of the original scope, that I have to get that direction from council.
So where I was going with that, I guess, is since the poles wouldn't be part of the parking lot. And no one knows that I'm more critical of, I'm pretty critical of spending, right? So I'm saying this in light of the fact of how critical I've been. As long as it, we don't go one penny over what we were, what we budgeted for this parking lot. Like, if they come back and the contingency's not enough for something, I, I would really hope that that doesn't happen. As long as we're under the overall budget for thirty-five thousand dollars for lights, I could support it.
You good?
Thanks.
Okay. Counsel Savoy.
My opinion on this one is that. I'm not necessarily seeing this as a parking lot issue, uh, more as a safety issue. I think liability also comes into play if it's dark. You know, uh, for s- security for the area, for the building as well. So I think we need to find a way to make it happen.
Okay, Counsel Murray?
Um, just to confirm, the, the lights, cause I think, uh, that, I don't, I don't remember ever this being a topic that got brought up to us during the whole parking lot. Thing. I'm just wondering why we were never informed that there'd be an additional thirty-five thousand dollars for lighting. Throughout this six-month-plus process, whatever it's been now, um, especially with N-Globe. I'm not very, uh, thrilled to hear that they've just kinda thrown this on us. Especially if there's a ten to twelve week, uh, delay in getting these items. In, you know, the darkest months of the year. It's kind of, let's get, not super professional from them to have kinda left this out, um, and kinda leave it to us to the last minute. Uh, may, may, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it was brought up before, but I don't remember the lighting ever being kind of an afterthought. I thought it was part of the whole scope of the paving process, the parking lot process, but.
So it wasn't part of the original process, but it's, it's not necessarily N-Globe bringing this to you guys. It's more me bringing it to you guys, because the contractor's willing to do the work under the current contract. So I'm like, if, if he's willing to do it, what, what is the cost of getting these installed? It, it's not N-Globe bringing it, it was me saying, how much, how much can you get these poles and lights for?
But if it was already planned to have, like, we were like, from what I saw on the plans, that there is spots for lights. So in my mind, those meant lights were gonna be, be provided in the whole parking lot quote. Like, the lights should have been a part of this whole thing, to build a parking lot with the bases and everything else. And then it never be thought of to, hey, we should also plan on what we're going to do once we pave it. And once we put all the bases in for a light, I think that should have been brought up to us now instead of, or be, then. Uh, or maybe it should have been an N-Globe thing to say, hey, you guys should probably plan on ordering these now as the wait times are gonna be. They said, it's just, it's gonna be very frustrating for a lot of people to see a brand-new parking lot and then no proper lighting for three months. So.
So the, the, the one point five million dollar project did have the bases and the full lighting. But that was removed from, the, the poles and the lighting was removed to reduce the cost down to the one. So that was part of the scope that was cut back.
So I, yeah, I, I don't think that was clear, because I would agree that I, when we saw the, the modified drawings for the. The reduced scope and saw light pole bases, I don't think there's anybody around this table that thought that it would just be a base and there'd be no pole and light. So I think all he's trying to say is, it was not very clear. So, yeah, this is a bit surprising.
And I'm not blaming you, or, but like, that, that should have been something that N-Globe explained very thoroughly, that like.
Yeah.
Hey, because of this reduced price, uh, that you guys don't wanna spend the one point five, um, that, because of that, you're not gonna have lighting. Included in this, that's, I said, that's, that's all I, I'm not trying to come at anybody, it's just, it's, it's to have that, uh. I guess I am trying to comment somebody, but as I said, to not explain that we're not gonna have lighting, and we'll have to have temporary lighting. That is a thousand dollars a week for the next twelve weeks, that's a third of the budget of what the lighting is gonna be anyways, for permanent lighting. So we're just kinda wasting money.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not proceeding with, um, the temporary parking lot lighting. Yeah, we're, we're, we don't even have that in the budget.
No, no, okay.
So have, just out of curiosity, have we asked N B Power what it would cost for them to put lights here?
We can ask N B Power, but that, we're still gonna have the base lights, we're still gonna have the bases out there.
Oh, they can't provide a light in that base? Is that what you mean? Oh, okay, okay. I, I guess I just, after the bridge conversation, I sort of feel like we should get a second opinion. On how much it would cost to put those lights up, just to make sure that, just cause after the quote we got for the bridge, I'm a little. Not comfortable, I guess. I don't, do you know what I mean?
I do, but I, I think, we, we do have to remember, it was. They looked at the bridge and they looked at a full engineered scope of putting in a new bridge. I don't think there's an engineer firm out there that wouldn't, and they didn't, these were estimated. So if you're looking at this many hours, this many loads of this, that, that was not a quote. That was an estimated engineer's price, right? So the, there was no quotes gone out, and it's gonna cost you ninety-eight thousand dollars. That was what I needed to go to R D C to apply for the grant. This is what we're looking at for money. This is what we're looking at for. This is what we're looking at for money, this is what we're looking at for funding application. Um. But obviously.
Can I jump in for a second?
Go ahead.
Yep. Councilor Martin, go ahead, yep, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't sure when I was supposed to jump in or if I got forgotten or what. Um, so I just wanna confirm on this here, so the light bases, sorry, the light posts themselves. Um, installation will be in the scope of the contractor that's out there, so that's not an additional cost. Um, the prices that were given are literally just the cost of the posts themselves, correct? Retail costs?
Uh, the posts and the, the lamps, the lights.
Okay, so it's just the physical material unit itself, um.
Yes, through, they would be ordered through, um. Uh, do you guys remember the name of the company? Uh. This morning, uh. Yeah, not absolute, um, a local company, uh, in Moncton.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm that that is just the, that is the price, that's not an inflated Anglobe deal. That's just the price, the retail cost of the, the posts and the lights themselves.
Yes.
Um, I do know in a scaling back from the original option, which had the thicker pavement, the, uh, and extended pavement and so on and so forth. That we, uh, uh, eliminated a lot of things. Um, personally, I think I, I think we're. A bit of fault in this one here because misunderstanding of what we were looking at. Um, and I do agree with Counselor Savoie. With the amount of kids that are going into the building for the basketball programs. And then the elderly people that are using the facility as well. I'm kinda wondering, without the additional lighting that's proposed on the basis that we have already paid to install. Um, would that create a liability issue should something happen? Without the lighting?
Well, I mean, to be fair, right now, there's lighting out there from NB Power. So we've always had, um, a little bit of light out there.
But we didn't have the extended parking lot.
We didn't have the extended parking lot, so. I, I, I guess I don't know how to answer that. I don't think there's a realistic, uh, requirement of us to have, you know, a certain amount of lumens in the parking lot.
Yeah. So I guess.
Um, for the safety side of it, I am, I'm for it, it, it's, uh, mud on our face for missing it. Um. I am for it with Counselor Savoie.
So I guess, to be clear, I'm not saying we shouldn't have lighting in this parking lot, I, I'm just suggesting that I. Not can, I, I'd be more comfortable if, if there was another price that we knew for sure. But, um, just back to what Counselor Martin said about, so that price is only for the lights. And the installation will be within the scope for the contractor. But if we took it out of the project, would it not no longer be in the contractor's scope and we would have to pay them to install them?
We would have to find a con, if, if we were gonna do this, like, later?
No, no, I mean, if it's not already part of this project cuz we took it out.
Yeah.
Will we not have to pay them to install them?
No, the contractor is willing to do it in the scope of the project.
Okay, so they've agreed not to charge us for installing them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, uh. Counselor Murray?
I just wanted to be noted that I, I do believe we should have lighting, that, that wasn't my, my gripe about this whole thing. I do believe we should have lighting out there. My gripe was that it wasn't communicated to us that in this new revised thing. Once again, I think if you're gonna say, you're gonna take something major like that out, yet leave the po, the, the post or the, the bases. I think it should have been communicated to us from Anglobe in their presentation that, hey, this is not gonna be there. That, that's my, my gripe, I think we still should have lighting. Um, my gripe is that it wasn't communicated to us. Um, we're not engineers, I don't know how to read all these plans and everything to say, hey, there was a post or not a post in this quote. Um, I just think it should have been communicated to us, but I do believe we should have lighting out there.
Okay, Counselor Estee?
I, I agree that we should have lighting, uh, given the scope of the parking lot and the fact they have bases and it's just the way it's gonna look. There is a safety component, whether or not we're legally obligated to is a whole other thing, but just, I think we should have it. I too didn't realize they weren't in there and I didn't feel like just going on a rant about it, but. No offense, but I, it's just, just no, like I do too, but, you know, ultimately, the fact that if we do come in under budget, ultimately. And we can use fifteen thousand of contingency.
Sure.
It's really only twenty. So as long as they're not going over the million, was my initial point.
Right.
We may not really be on the hook for the entire thirty-five. Because if they come thirty under budget, it's only five. And so as long as the, they don't come back and say, well, actually, it's one-point-one for the driveway and we need thirty-five for lighting. That was my thing, as long as they come in under, I could, I could probably stomach it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, so it being thirty-five thousand and them having a contingency of twenty thousand, so we already know it's not gonna come in. No, no, it's not gonna come in under budget, so. Um. I guess I need further direction from council to proceed or not.
So I guess the ask now then is to add thirty-five thousand dollars to next year's budget to pay for these lights, is that, like, just so that we all understand what the ask is?
Uh, not necessarily from the, not from the budget, it would, it would come out of the gas tax. It would.
Okay, so, so the CCFB money is there for us to?
Yeah, so, so right now, there's one-point-eight of the CCBF money available for the parking lot. Yeah, I know, I, me too, all the time. Um. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a budgeted item on our operational plan. We would just take, extend what we're taking out of the CCBF allotment. Um, but there's, you, you, council have two options and it's kind of like, you know, half a dozen of one. Six of the other, it's, it's, do you want to use the contingency? I guess it's, that's just kind of an accounting, an accounting question, whether you wanna go ahead with contingency for this. Or we leave the contingency just in case something comes up. You know, like there was a. Uh. Yeah, sewer line that had to be fixed and, um, the new ditch that had to be done. There's ditching that needs to be done as part of the, the landscaping, like, if anything comes up. I'm always comfortable having a contingency there, but, um.
Okay, well, I would say.
Counselor Estee?
This is, this is further to the mayor's question. Um, so what's the ask? So you're asking that we amend the original, the motion where we approved it for one. You would like us to amend that emotion to one million thirty-five thousand? Or are you asking us to, if we wanna use all the contingency for this? Like, how exactly would we vote on this and what exactly are you asking, I guess?
That is a great question. So it would be, I don't have to go back to the original motion.
Cuz we said one-point-eight.
No.
No, for the.
No, no, for the CC.
For the parking lot.
F.
Yeah.
It's one-point-eight.
We voted on the parking lot.
Oh, you're talking about the, okay, sorry.
The parking lot, because we voted on the parking lot at a maximum budget.
That's not what I thought you were asking, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so I don't think I necessarily need a motion, I can answer that at the, at the regular, or. At the next regular meeting, because that's when we would do a motion if I need a motion for it. But the ask is, do council want to go over the amount that they had said? And approve an additional thirty-five thousand?
Understood, however that plays out. So we ultimately, I don't think we're gonna know how much of the contingency was used until we're closer to the end. So right now, it's premature, so we have to assume almost that the contingency will be used. So it, it's really a question, are we willing to go to one million thirty-five thousand? And I would support that ultimately.
Okay, so everybody's good with that? Cuz I assume, yeah, you, there will be something on the next agenda asking us formally to agree to that, is?
No, if, around, around the table tonight, if, if council gives the direction to me that, okay, we're gonna go ahead and order these. If I need a formal motion after, I'll get a motion, but it's, it's really committee of the whole, you guys are allowed to give me direction.
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
Can we go around the table and just say a or nay?
I think every, I think everybody has already said that they supported it, including you, but did you have any other concerns?
Nope, I had no other concerns, I just wasn't sure if we were putting it to a final or not, so, no, I'm for it.
Okay, I just need to make a note for myself.
Um, just to let you know, Hannah, so I can hear when you're talking, but I can't hear when all the, like, sometimes I can hear some of the counselors, sometimes I don't, so.
Okay. Okay. Um, okay, so are we okay to move on to twenty-twenty-six budget? Yes, okay. Where was I going with that?
Somebody never get to rant. It doesn't matter.
I appreciated that rant. You covered everything I wanted.
Eric's against the war too.
That's getting there, he was quite.
Well, I was like, that's gas tax money. I knew it.
You wanna bottle water?
Sure, thanks.
I'm good. Does that bottle water?
Okay, so I'm going to share this on the screen.
Yeah.
If you'll just allow me a moment to figure out why my two spreadsheets don't match.
Thanks.
You're allowed to speak, is it, it's the insurance?
Yeah, she said she doesn't think you updated the insurance on that.
The liability.
CAO Downey, I don't believe we updated the insurance. Fourteen-four-zero-six. Fourteen-four-zero-six. I'm gonna figure it out as we go through here. Um, okay, so none of these have changed from our last budget meeting. Maybe I'll make this a little bigger. What I did change. No, I didn't change that. Yeah. Counselor Martin, can you see that, my screen still?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Um, okay, so this one changed to fourteen-four-zero-six, just because we actu, got our numbers from insurance. I made this line blue to sort of revisit it, um, after Mayor Warren had asked the question, does this, does the renewal, um, funding apply for new signage? Does council want to budget for signage or is that something that maybe you wanna consider? Um, with the remaining commi, Canada Community Building Fund. Um, in, in future years or next year or.
Yeah.
Rather than an operational budget? Yep. Okay. Uh, so then it wouldn't actually show up as a, as a budgetary line item? These numbers are all still the same?
Oh, uh, CAO Downey, I, did we have the RCMP number at the last meeting? I know you shared it with me, but, okay, I think you have that now, right?
Um, I do have the RCMP number.
We didn't, you and I discussed it when you got it, but I don't think the rest of council saw.
Okay. So it's an increase of two percent?
Originally, we bought it, we had it for what, five or eight?
I think five.
Cause someone was once, Shediak cut off my eight personally, that wasn't it?
That was for fire.
That was fire services.
Fire, we got Moncton, we did not get Chandore yet.
Yeah, so, um, we have.
Moncton went up, how much?
Moncton went up. Hmm, sorry, it's been like a week since I looked at that number, I don't remember, Moncton went up, but, but not by very much.
I think we had it at eight percent, but it didn't come close to that.
Yeah, cuz even with a combined right now, we're looking at a two percent increase overall.
Yeah.
Um.
And Chandore will.
Chandore, this number is a, a placeholder right now.
Yeah.
Um.
But they don't provide, how much service do they provide?
Ten thousand of the?
Yeah.
Uh, no, a hundred and two thousand, the ninety-three-seventy.
That's what you sent me, so that's what it was and that's what it is now.
Okay.
So it would not, Moncton went up by twelve thousand dollars.
That's it?
But part of that, Hannah, would that not be, I think they do a population count or something like that to determine our total, right?
Oh, and their population went up?
No, for ours, yeah.
No, but theirs would have gone up.
Yeah, but for our bill, they count our residents. So if we, right, isn't that right?
Yeah.
So if we get an increase in population, it's gonna go up because there's more houses to protect. But yeah, it went up twelve thousand over last year. And Shediak went up a thousand.
Yes, eighty, eighty-four to ninety-three.
So Chandore is the one we're waiting for now.
So not many numbers changed since the last budget, these are major numbers, but we don't really have a lot of changes.
Right, but the only number that's left to finalize the service numbers is Chandore.
Which is small because even if we're off by five percent, it's still barely gonna move it.
Yeah, yeah.
We're hoping.
Right, so what's the effect compared to where we are now?
Just hope it's not only a revenge number.
A revenge number, no, I, I mean, I was bracing myself, um, for Moncton after the service they provided with the wildfires, but. Guess that's not the way they work, it's all, it's very calculated by, you know, debenture payments and, you know.
That was also a DNR project.
Yeah, the province, yeah.
Believe there was one other change. Okay, right here, so, um. This went from a hundred and seventy-seven thousand to one-eighty-five because there was an increase in janitorial when we looked at the, the year-to-date. Um, but then there, there is a small decrease in what we had anticipated for insurance. Um, so that was another number that changed.
Insurance, was that interchangeable or, uh, liability?
This one is, is the buildings and property, so our liability is on a different line item. So overall, our insurance went up, uh, a thousand dollars, I believe. It went from forty-four thousand to forty-five thousand. Very minimal increase. Um. I'm wondering if this is where the number. Vanessa, it's not, it's not that number, okay. Are you looking as, as I'm going? Okay. Yep, oh, capital reserve, did I maybe not update this one? No, I do have that.
We did agree to, I don't know if we agreed, but.
We did, we did not agree, I, I plunked that number in to see what it was gonna look like.
Yeah.
Um, so I actually should have that in a different color. Cuz remember the last time I had that at seventy-five thousand, yeah?
So with the numbers where they sit now, given the changes that we received, and I know, um, so at the last service commission meeting. They indicated that they had found some savings and that we would see an additional saving, it's gonna be under a thousand dollars.
Right.
But there will be a change, a minor change to our member costs for, um. For all of our expenses for the service commission, but it will be very minor.
Yeah.
So.
So we're still down two and a half cents plus.
Yes.
Whatever is left to be decided, is there a way? Whatever is left to be decided, is there a way you can just, we can go through that and just? Oh, sorry.
So Counselor Martin, Deputy Mayor Jangra is asking to go through the expenditures again.
Basically the discretionary stuff, and then we can just make a decision and.
Yep.
Prepare our motion for?
I know for, also for like training, you had, uh, you had over budgeted, I think. You had put down twenty-five, and it was, you said you wanted fifteen or something like that?
I'm gonna just be cautious. I'm gonna turn this off because I, I think all personnel information is on this slide. No, sorry, it was hidden here. Is this what you're referring to?
Yes.
That's kind of my, that was my wish list, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it was, it was a little different on the others. You had one in the, a number for twenty-twenty-five, yeah.
And I don't know if you want to talk about this in closed session then, I don't know.
I would love to talk about this, obviously, because it's, it's, um, for me, the training is important. But I'm, I'm already asking for a thousand dollars more than last year. But if you, if you do look at my wish list, I do have a wish list with justification as to what it covers.
Yeah, I think I have questions that might want to be in closed session.
So, so she's asked for this amount, but then her wish list was larger than that amount. Okay, sorry. Yeah, okay, I understand now.
So that absolutely can be discussed in closed session. Does council want to proceed with just going at the top and going through?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Um, because essentially, everything that is not highlighted is, um, I haven't turned it green yet, so it's not a final number. If you want to go through subject by subject?
I was gonna say, I think, like, we're not gonna bother talking about our, our salaries or our, like, you can go past that. I think we're all clear.
Just scroll slow.
This was a, this was an item that you guys had talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Training for the new council.
Yeah. Vanessa, is it, it's not this line item, is it? Under office building? Eighty-seven two fifty? I don't want to mess council up by clicking on the other tab. It is that line item? What, what, uh? Eighty-nine two fifty? Oh, okay, is that where the insurance was? Uh, eighty-seven two fifty, sorry, council. Eighty-seven two fifty down from? Oh, 'cause the insurance was two thousand dollars less than we had, okay. So we just saved two thousand, so that other spreadsheet is gonna look a little different now, and I'll just, I'll just go back quickly to it. It's not gonna have a huge implication, but pretty much better than two cents, just a little bit better than two cents.
So the one in yellow is definite?
The one in yellow should be changed to green because we got that final number today. Did you guys want to talk about this one? Because you are gonna have, um, some new faces around the, around the, the table potentially. This is what it's go, this is where I pay for you guys going to conferences and, um, is there any flavor to increase that? Maybe if the new council all want to go to something? Or if they decide to have a, um, what do they call those, Mayor Warren?
So, so la- No, so last year, or when we were elected, uh, the province did orientation at Frederickson. So that budget sent us to Frederickson, and then we all went to U M M B, so that sent us all to Frederickson. So that's where that budget sits. So I guess what she's asking is if, if the province offers something and U M M B offers something, do we want to make sure that there's enough in there that the councillors could? I mean, U M M B's annual conference is here, so we shouldn't have the mileage and the hotels and stuff for that one, but because there's potential for there to be extra orientation sessions over and above other years, I guess the question is, do you want to beef that budget up a little bit to make sure that the council could get any training that's offered?
Advocacy days is what I was trying to remember. Advocacy days.
I think they're gonna piggyback that on the AGM this year.
Okay.
So when you, sorry, side note, when U M B had their budget meeting, their AGM, sorry, no, their special meeting about the rates, they went through the budget with us, and we adopted the budget, and I asked that question 'cause they had a line item for ad- advocacy days, and it was like twelve thousand dollars cheaper than it had been in the past, and they said they're looking to piggyback that off, so like Thursday would be advocacy days, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday would be their conference next year to save some money. Oh, sorry, Counselor Savoy.
Well, it's a question comment. I was gonna say that about the, uh, AGM next year. It is gonna start on the Thursday as opposed to the Friday because of the training as well. Assuming there's, might be new faces around the table. Historically, within the province and other provinces, I, I hardly believe it'd be more than half, so maybe like at the maximum, there might be three new faces. If we put it up, I, I don't think it'd need to be up more than a thousand dollars than what's there to cover everybody's training. If we don't use it, we don't use it.
Okay, anybody else have comments on that particular? Counselor Murray?
Yeah, I guess I was, I mean, my, my comment was that with one part of it being in Moncton, I, you know, obviously we, we have another one that's away in Frederickson or something like that. This year, everything was away, I believe. All the conference, like anything.
We only went to one this year.
Yeah, so the one, you know, so if it's, we're only going to one again next year when it comes to travel, we should fit in that same, so I'm fine with keeping it the same way. Because we are lucky that the, uh, we have the Moncton one this year, so.
Okay, so there's no appetite to increase it, is that what we're saying then? Okay.
Okay. Back to civic relations, there might be things that we want to, um, buy to help build that Maple Hills brand with, I, I really don't like the term swag, but swag for, um, our residents. Pins, pens, that type of thing. Is there any appetite to increase that?
So question, for the twenty-nine-hundred year-to-date, uh, what, like what, I don't need like a line item, but generally speaking, was that clothing, was that letterhead? Like what generally made that up? Broad strokes, like?
Yeah, I, so I didn't really buy council a lot of things this year. That was mostly our, um, our staff dinner that we did, um, the outing that I had planned for, for council team building in January. And a few things, but, I mean, I, I didn't, I'll be honest, I didn't spend a lot on council this year. Sorry, guys, I did not spoil you.
Like some of our councillors, we didn't bother because, well, we're gonna have hopefully a new logo soon, and so I think, I think what Hannah's trying to say is that next year, we might want a golf shirt with a logo on it, or, you know, a, a sweatshirt, or do we feel that that number gets us where we want to be to replace the stuff we had, or, or, you know, promote the new logo, I guess?
Unfortunately, I just thought of this now, and I, I, it should have been thought of before, but this budget would also pay for, uh, new council headshots, which regardless if there's new people around the table, it, it will have to be done again.
Once and it's good for the next thirty years.
Like I don't know how much we're really gonna be giving away, like, I don't, I just, where this is, to me, kind of an austerity budget, in a way, I would rather err on the side of not increasing it, but and I'm thinking likewise for most of the expenses that are discretionary.
Counselor Savoy?
So, uh, following up on, on what councillor asked you, saying, during our, our last AGM, uh, for the U M N B, it was brought up to our attention that the other cities like Shediak, uh, give their, uh, councillors and staff an allowance for the year, and then they, if they want anymore, they.
For clothing, you mean?
For, for clothing, for any of the swag. So I think if we count, yeah, yeah, so, um, let's say we go with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars for council and staff, it still leaves a lot of room to buy other things for residents, i.e. like pens and pins and to distribute in population, so.
Yeah.
I, I, if council has an appetite for that, to like set an amount, and if you want any more than that, you pay out of pocket.
And that's, that, that's fine, we can do that, but I think tonight what we're trying to achieve is, are we?
That's what I'm saying, if we go that route, I believe that ten thousand dollars is enough.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Martin, did you have, did you want to chime in, or, sorry?
Counselor Murray?
No, I'm just listening to what I can hear.
Okay, so, so I guess in case you couldn't hear, we discussed the travel budget and felt that everyone around the room felt that they were happy leaving it where it was. Same with the civic relations budget, which would include swag. Those are, in case you couldn't hear everything, those were the only two things we really debated at any length.
Uh, the travel budget and the civic relation budget. I'm fine leaving it where it's at.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, this was one thing that was mentioned at the last meeting, was possibly increasing our grant budget, um, to a thousand?
Yes.
Sorry, increasing it by a thousand?
Yeah.
Is that something council still would like to consider?
I would like to see us do that. Increase the grant budget by a thousand dollars, so that we have six thousand worth next year. Counselor Savoy?
It's getting more popular.
Okay, it sounds like everybody is on board with changing that number to six thousand. So that one, and we had already said we'd look at gas tax or CCBF money?
Yes.
Okay.
So just while we're, this isn't really budget-related, but while we're on this, um, I have gone forward with, uh, Jim Lindsay doing, uh, EMO work for us, um, and he is going to come to the meeting next week on the twelfth. Also a reminder that we're meeting next week on the twelfth and not Tuesday, um, to kind of present what he's doing for council and, and where he's going. Madam Mayor? Counselor Savoy?
Counselor Savoy?
My question, it, EMO and training, would, uh, staff, first aid course and CPR and all that stuff fall into that line item, or into staff training?
Yeah, so, uh, myself and Chanel had done first aid last year, um, and it did, it came out of our training budget, not this budget line item. However, where we have Jim, he's actually gonna be doing, uh, the ICS training. He's qualified to do ICS one hundred and two hundred, I believe. Um, so he's gonna be doing that, so there, there, there won't be a cost to have somebody do it for us. But if there was an appetite for somebody on council to have their first aid, it would probably come out of, um, conventions and delegations. Not really, so I'm not sure what our S E line item's gonna uh, be reduced, but?
It, it, yeah, it'll be in the, it'll be in the hundreds of dollars, so. If it's eleven thousand across twelve municipalities, it's not gonna be much.
Was the, uh, the, the line for maritime enforcement agent added?
Just right here, yeah. So streetlights, that was based on a budget of an increase in the service and, and increase in the amount of poles. Regional contract, eco-three-sixty, um, planning fees. Regional tourism. So I believe, um, someone from the Service Commission is going to be presenting to the board, community, what is he, what is, uh?
Oh. No, he's not economic. After the regional projects, so we're gonna ask him to attend hopefully a January meeting to do a presentation on the regional transportation and the recreational infrastructure cost sharing, 'cause in November, they're doing presentations for both of those items to board members, and it's, because of space constraints, they are not open to the public, so we're gonna ask them to come do one for you guys, so that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. So this one was blue because I, I wanted to remember that it was a different number than I presented with you, to you guys before. Five thousand trails committee. Oh, fifteen thousand Lakeville. I'm not sure why I have that one as a open for discussion. It's kind of what it costs.
That one went down because the overflow parking?
Uh, no, that's not why it went down, but, uh, there could be some cost, cost savings in mowing area. I guess this one is open for discussion too. I guess it, it depends on what type of event council want, um, us to produce for Canada Day. Keeping in mind that there's funding that we're applying for as well.
Deputy Mayor Jangra?
So the last year's was ten thousand? Is that correct?
Last year, the budget was fourteen, we spent ten.
Yeah, so why, why is it five?
Because we don't have a community development officer who would be organizing all of those events that we had last year.
Yeah, okay, but, um.
But if there's an appetite for us to do more events, it, we can.
I think those two days, or, you know, those two things, the things we do well, you know, we should make sure they're well-funded. You know, they, they are the things that we do attract people here.
So I know that we wouldn't, um, they wouldn't have a huge cost to them, but what was the cost to the? So I know that we wouldn't, um, they wouldn't have a huge cost to them, but what was the cost to the town halls that we did? And if we chose to do those again, is there room in there for that? Because I, I thought, I realized one of them didn't have a very good turnout, but in general, I think they were not a bad idea.
Can we leave it at the same amount that we did spend this year?
You mean for the, those?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put, put it to ten.
That's what I'm thinking. Just put it to ten and, you know, if we don't spend it, then, all right, we don't spend it, but. You know, those are the two days that we do well and we're not, we're not doing the Easter thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Unless you want to do it.
No.
I don't.
You would? Chad will do the Easter thing. My wife said she'll plan the Canada Day and Family Fun Day thing.
So, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Um, I'm in agreeance with, uh, the deputy mayor on this one where we have some kind of staple events that we do well. I feel like they should be well funded and continue that growth, um, and with well funding it, if the possibility arrives, move, potentially have some stuff going in the other wards as well on those days where we don't currently have it now.
So I, it sounds like the appetite is to put it to where we've spent this year?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Put it to what we spent, put it to what we spent this year.
Can you go into the spreadsheet and add it?
His watch just went.
Do you know where to put that? Oh my goodness, everybody's getting sick on me. So. In the, uh, no, just ten thousand and it goes in this line under the shared services or in this column. I'm just curious if it like is. There we go, so. Very insignificant change.
How so?
But it's interesting just to see it.
She went back to check the tax rates.
It was point oh two eight one, now it's point oh two seven seven.
So I think if I just do this, no, it's not going to work. Okay. Um, okay, good with all those.
Can't change those.
So we're left with the capital reserve. Um, I know it's a little bit of an unpopular opinion, um. But.
For capital, is it?
No, it, increasing this and keeping our tax rate status quo.
But we're dropping them by two cents.
Unless we increase what we're investing into capital.
Oh.
Okay, and then what's, so if that becomes one twenty?
Sorry.
If that becomes one twenty-five, what happens to the tax rate?
It, it, currently it's at one twenty-five.
Oh.
And what's your suggestion?
Yeah, what, what is it you're suggesting that will increase the rate?
Like, are you suggesting we would put more and not decrease the tax rate?
Because you initially had it at seventy-five.
Yeah, and you guys wanted it, it, to see what it would be increased, even increase it further.
Oh, to increase it further?
Yeah, like just considering that, I don't know, this is a probably seven million dollar property now.
I do want to, I do want to say though, um, we have, uh, we still have room for in our, the gas tax, I'm just going to call it that. And which is for, you know, um, things. And, I mean, there's no other way to say it, it's for things.
It's for capital items.
Exactly, things. So we have, uh, you know, the capital funding from the province. So, you know, again, more things, so, uh, I'm pretty happy with the one twenty-five myself. We have access to other funding.
And this is the only property we can use it on?
Yeah.
Counselor ST?
I think it's pretty, you know, especially in terms of having a new asset, uh, budgeting, if we did one percent of the original cost of this building as maintenance. You know, like, that's, it'd be seventy thousand, right? That's one percent and it's like a new building. So like us, us doing one twenty-five is probably almost, well, like not quite two percent, but it's one point five percent of the total cost of the building. I think it's probably reasonable.
Anybody else?
I would defer to that. I would defer to the gentleman that do manage properties and, and if he says that's sufficient, I tend to agree.
Technical term.
Huh? No, but I.
Yeah, no.
There, it's a fine line between doing like being too safe and, and not doing enough.
Yeah.
If, if the standard is, is one percent, I think at one twenty-five is.
So how much is in the capital reserve now? Do you know, like ballpark?
Eighty-five, eighty-six.
Eighty-five or eighty-six, okay. So if we put in another one twenty-five, we're now at two-ten. And if we do it next year, we're at almost three fifty. So that fund's going to be growing, right? So as long as we're putting in one or two percent a year, as the building ages, we're going to start needing more work, potentially. Like the door and receiving doors and the roof, but we're already going to be over two hundred once, once we put this in. So that's a lot of, it's a lot of room for an asset that's this new, I would argue.
Sorry, Counselor Martin, were you trying to?
Um, yeah. Uh, to be honest with you, I'd like to see that budget healthy in case something does go south. I know, you say there's eighty thousand or approximately in it right now. Um, we've all seen with engineer fees and contracting, that can be taken up in a hurry. Um, I'm comfortable with the one twenty-five.
Okay, so I would agree with that just because of what Deputy Mayor Jean-Grau said, that right now we have a couple of, um, funds that, that are provided to us that the only thing we can spend it on is this property. So given that, you know, we have access to that funding for this property only, I, I'm, I'm comfortable this year with that being the amount that we put in.
This is just, um, if you guys will remember, this is before my time here, but I know that, um, we had had a, an O and M analysis done. So based on, what are we, like, we'll say going into year four now? The recommendation for, uh.
What?
No.
No. Of this building?
We only, we were only in here for a year in May.
A year in May?
Yes.
This past May, this past May.
The grand opening was just like.
Yeah, the grand opening was in July or June.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Year two. So we're a year two.
Okay, I mean, they don't.
So we're overfunded.
They don't vary that much really, but I believe, sorry, I thought this had a line item for. Yeah, maybe I'm looking at the wrong sheet.
The maintenance is the second last column on the right.
No, it wasn't, uh. It was average building. I thought they had a suggestion for capital investment in here somewhere.
They had a column of maintenance.
Right here?
Administration, yeah.
No, that wasn't it. Sorry.
The next, the next.
Second one.
Other side.
I just saw it.
Down, 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 to the next page.
Oh, yeah.
Over.
Over, right there. Major expenditure building maintenance at fifty a square foot. So if you add all that up, that's a spend.
But that includes all of this.
Sorry, I, I thought I was looking at a different, I thought there was a, a suggested amount to put into capital. In this. But I would be wrong. Okay, regardless, um. I mean, I'm happy with the one twenty-five. Not every council wants to be faced with having to do a big increase in tax rate if you're going to, if you're going to lower it, that's all. If you're, if we're lowering it, but, um, like if there's, if something comes up next year and, you know, our, our CMP, they don't give us a two percent increase, we look at an eight percent increase, then we're looking at increasing the, the tax rate. Usually the tax rate is, should either stay steady or increase a little bit over each year, but I understand, um, council don't want to increase it at all. So right now we are looking at decreasing the tax rate.
So I think it, it kind of seems like everybody's comfortable with, with the exception of.
Like if you want to go to, like, just, if you, if you plug in one fifty, like, it's, it's not, it's just going to move it down a quarter cent. Like, you know, the recommendation, I think that, that Deputy Mayor said it was originally seventy-five and now we've basically almost doubled it. Well, not quite doubled it, but we've, we brought it up fifty. Which, which will put us over two hundred thousand sitting in capital reserve with all the other money available to us that the mayor mentioned.
Yeah.
That seems pretty, like a pretty healthy pot, given we have one asset.
So are we saying, plug it in at one fifty and see what that looks like? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, just, I'm just taking what the CAO set at face value, because I understand that there can be a smoothing where if we're doing our best this year to have an austerity budget, and if something beyond our control comes up next year, we're sort of artificially lowering it because we did have a surplus two years ago. So if we sort of wipe out that surplus, just, just theoretically, we're really at, the budget's the same as last year, because most of the money that we're saving on the cent comes from that. So I can see the logic of, we're sort of artificially lowering it because we had a surplus. That's working in our favor. And we could also next year be double hit because we may not have a surplus as large as the one two years ago. And there could be a new unexpected expense. And so the sensitivity of the swing could be greater. So I do respect the logic, so that's just why I was mentioning, maybe if you want to move it up a little bit, just to see what it looks like. Because we already are lower than last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My concern is it's not only, we don't just have one property, we do have two. We have a building next door that I don't have our asset management report back on that, like, what type of work needs to go into that building?
So. I guess what are, like, are we saying, plug it in at one fifty, see what it looks like and are we comfortable with where we land?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's.
But just to see what it looks like.
Yeah, put in two hundred and see what happens.
Okay, um, Vanessa, I'm going to open up this screen so that council have it. So as soon as she plugs in the number over there, you'll see the difference pop up here.
Just so I understand, Mayor, are you saying?
We have to use the mics, guys, because we're live streaming, everybody can't hear if you're.
So you're suggesting if we can do two hundred this year, so that next year if we have a blow, we don't have to put in as much?
Yeah, still two cents.
Can you go, can you just exit, or, uh, arrow back?
So what I'm saying is, you're saying raise it, yeah, because most of the money we're saving is, is because of a surplus from a couple of years ago. It, it was over two hundred thousand. That was our surplus. So that's two cents. So, so right now we're looking at saving, so the tax rate is basically being dropped by the surplus. So if we, if we did not have a surplus two years ago, right now, the tax rate's flat. So right now, our tax rate, I would argue, is artificially lowered because that's an unusual item on a budget. It's unusual to have that much of a surplus. So if you want to compare apples to apples, you would normally want to remove unusual items. If it's like a big one-time expense or if it's a big one-time savings, because that's not going to be repeated every year necessarily. So what I'm saying is, if, if we were to bring it up closer to what the CAO is recommending, that we do a little bit of smoothing so that next year, there's not a surplus of two hundred thousand and we have a new unexpected expense. We're going to get double walloped. We're losing out on the surplus, which was an unexpected item and, you know, an unusual item, and we're getting hit by this new expense that we didn't know was coming, say. So it would be quite jarring if, you know.
To correct it by putting it up by three cents.
That's a huge correction. Like, say it's like a seven cent swing. Right? Now it's down to a five, so the, the, the logic is having a little bit more smoothing.
Sorry, Counselor Martin, are you, uh, trying to?
Nope, I'm.
Okay.
I'm following and I'm liking where this is going.
Okay.
So, so yeah, if, it, it looks like, I don't, can you still see Hannah's screen?
Uh, yes, I can.
Okay, so the change. So the, the change to two, to two hundred, was it Vanessa? Uh, move the tax rates to, uh, there, she's got it up there now. So it's still almost two or just under two.
Yeah. What's it for each, for each region?
Pardon?
One's the highest one, but two fifteen.
I think that's Irish Town, the first one.
No, Shidiak, Shidiak.
So there was some juggling to get everybody closer to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe even go two fifty then. Like, we're still good and I do, I do like the logic of the smoothing, especially where we're not spending it on one-time expenditures. This is going towards capital. Oh, sorry, my mic moved on.
Yeah. So do you want to try two fifty and see what it looks like? Okay.
Do your own rule.
So this is more like the decrease that we saw this year.
I'm good with that still.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, could you hear us, Counselor Martin? She moved it to two fifty and that's where the tax rate's at? Everybody's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if, if, if council's okay, um, we can leave it like this. When the other number that we're waiting for, like firm for a number is Chanda Day Fire. So if, um, that comes in more than what we have, then obviously I'll, I'll let council know and, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so everybody's good with that? When she gets the number, she might decrease the reserve number to keep the, these rates where they're at now? Okay, perfect. Okay, so.
And one last question. So this budget currently reflects the training of fifteen and not twenty?
Uh, training?
Training budget.
Because I know that, that the Deputy Mayor wanted it to be in closed session, but just so, this part's public without going into it. I would, I'd want the fifteen, just where it, it's an austerity budget. I think I wouldn't want to see it up that much.
Okay.
It's right here.
And that's the staff training budget you're referring to.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? So at this point, when, when CAO Downing gets the fire protection numbers for Chanda Day and balances the reserve transfer so that the tax rate is what we just saw this evening, unless nothing else changes, everybody should be happy at the next meeting with. Perfect.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Um, so before we go into closed session, it's not really on the agenda, but it sounds like, um, there's also a transfer to reserve that we have to do at the end of the year too.
Yes.
Um, so there will be a meeting at some point in December, even if it has to be virtual, um, because we will, we try to do it at the, the last minute that we. Um, because we will, we try to do it at the, the last minute that we can, that allows us to go to the bank. And actually physically do the transfer and, um, but we have to make sure that we have a pretty accurate number. Of what we're transferring into, into reserve, um, which is capped at five percent of the previous year's expenditures anyway. So, um, we have to do that too, so that will be, I can't believe it, but we are November fourth, so. It's insane.
Yeah. Okay, so at this point, it sounds like potentially we could plan to do a virtual December meeting. Because there'll be potentially two motions to, to pass. Okay, so the next item would be the closed session item, so it would now take a motion to enter closed session, moved by Counsel SD. Seconded by Counsel Murray. All those in favor moving to closed session, show your consent by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion carried.